Good morning. We'll call the Tuesday, April 27th, 2021 Reno County Commission to Order. At this time, we will have a flag salute and a prayer by Pastor Daryl Peterson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Dear heavenly most gracious Father, what an honor it is that we can come before you today. And we thank you, Lord God, for this county, Father, the commissioners, as they get ready to start their meeting that, Father, we just thank you that we come and ask for your help, your assistance. And Father, we thank you for so many things that you have already done, so many things. But Father, we know that in life today, there's so many ups and there's so many downs. And so many people don't know what to do and don't know how to handle the ups and the downs. But Father, we know that nothing is a shock with you. You know what's going to happen long before it ever happens, and you know what the answers are. And Father, we thank you as we come today, that, Father, we just thank you the revelation of your word will come forth. But, Father God, surety of decisions to be made. And, Father, we just thank you for all the good things, all the promises that you've already made. And, Father, every promise you've made unto us, unto the county, to the commissioners, Father, is yes and in him, amen. And, Father, we just thank you that this is a blessed day, a blessed opportunity for decisions to be made. We thank you for these things in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Beth. I think before I read a proclamation, I would like to thank all the people, especially the district attorney, for the wonderful presentation they did last Thursday evening with regard to the victims, crime victims, that was held in South Hutchinson. It was such a meaningful, reverent, and personal meeting that, well attended, on a solemn occasion, as well as a time for people just to get together and visit those that had had come into conflict at one time or another. And I'd especially like to thank Tom Stanton and his crew, the Victims' Organization, as well as the Detective Skomel, who gave quite a meaningful presentation that evening to show that no matter what happens, one can achieve if they just work at it and trust. So, anyway, that's what I wanted to comment before we got into the proclamation. And also, there will be an event on May 14th, a ceremony honoring peace officers and fallen peace officers in front of the courthouse at 10:30 a.m. So if you'd like to attend that, it's kind of a, it's really a nice time to meet the officers as well as partake in honoring those who have fallen. This proclamation is whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas from the beginning of this nation, law enforcement officers have played an important role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms which are guaranteed by the Constitution and in protecting the lives and property of our citizens. And whereas through constant application of new procedures and techniques, such officers are becoming more efficient in their enforcement of our laws. And whereas it is important that our people know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police departments and the necessity for cooperating with them and maintaining law and order. And whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 24,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including 360 officers in 2020 alone. And whereas it is fitting and proper that we express our gratitude for the dedicated service and courageous deeds of law enforcement officers and for the contributions they have made to the security and well-being of all of our people. Now, therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners, call upon all citizens of Reno County, Kansas, and all patriotic, civil, and educational organizations to observe the week of May 9th through 15th as Police Week. Please join us in commemorating police officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. And do hereby proclaim the week of May 9th through 15th as Police Week. Furthermore, we call upon all citizens of Reno County, Kansas, to observe May 15th, 2021, as Police, Peace Officers Memorial Day to honor those peace officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of duty. In witness whereof, we have here and to set our hands and cause the seal of Reno County to be affixed this 27th day of April, 2021. And Sergeant Massingell, please come up and accept this proclamation on behalf of Reno County.
Yes, sir.
And please say a few words if you care.
Yes, sir. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to re-stress, our memorial ceremony will be on the 14th. Due to construction, it will be in front of the law enforcement center instead of the courthouse. Also to kind of touch on some stats you gave, this year's line of duty deaths, according to, first thing this morning when I checked, is 103 nationwide, which is up 30% from last year. So I know here in Reno County, the Sheriff's Office definitely appreciates the continued support of commissioners and the citizens. It's a great community to work in. We gladly accept this proclamation. Again, we greatly appreciate your support. Thank you.
Some of you have attended in the past on the May 14th. It's really a nice event, a really honored event. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, we have public comments on items not on the agenda. I believe we have anyone here that's not on the agenda, right? Is there any revisions or additions to these, to this agenda? Commissioner?
No.
Go.
No, sir.
Okay. The consent agenda today consists of vouchers or bills of payments owed by the county or related taxing units of $709,608.54, the minutes for the meetings of February and March of 2021, an appointment of Brooke Davis to be the Reno County Health Department Advisory Board, Resolution 2021-10 approving a conditional use permit for the placement of a manufactured home at 1002 North Obey Road, and a cereal malt beverage license renewal for Oasis Convenience Store for off-premises sales. Commission, all right with those consent agenda items, take entertaining motion to approve?
So moved. Seconded.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented by staff. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on page 28 of the minutes is given to us. I think there's an error when we were talking about the Health Department successful giving shots back at that point in time. I think they gave 600 shots and the minutes read 6,000. I thought they did extremely well to do 600, but 6,000 would be out of the question. So we probably should change that.
All right.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to first compliment the clerk's office for their significantly detailed minutes, as always. I was just wondering, I assume this takes, send you a lot of time and given it's recorded now, I didn't know if this is just continued policy or this is what the clerk prefers to do, but, boy, it seems like a lot of work if it's on record verbatim.
That's a good point. How long are the recordings kept?
Do you know how long? Yeah, I'm not sure, but they don't need to be as detailed as that. And when we go to Granicus, if the clerk wants to go mainly on the motions and a general summary of discussions, it would change and possibly even be able to do them for the next meeting instead of a month or two at a time, that would be easier for you guys or more efficient.
I think it'd be more efficient, don't you think?
Well, I suppose it's the clerk's call, but it just seems like a lot of work for you. I appreciate it, but I think some people probably would pull the video up before they read the minutes anyways now.
I guess something the administrator and the clerk's office could work on and see what's legal and so forth.
Yeah, but these are great. Thank you.
So with the note of change in the minutes from 6,000 to 600, is there any more discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes. All right. First item on the business items is the guidelines revision for the Reno County Health Department Advisory Board by Carla Nichols, the Director.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carla Nichols, Director of Public Health for Reno County. So what we presented to you was just a general guideline. There was just a couple of wording changes within our current guidelines that upon review, they haven't been reviewed since 2012. So the Advisory Board did review the guidelines and then wanted to bring them to you for your review, for your approval.
Any of the other commissioners have any questions with regard to the revisions made?
They look, the revisions were pretty minimal, just kind of administrative. I was just curious, does this committee or board, do you work with them on any of the ongoing COVID policy and actions that the Health Department is taking, or what's their role in that, if any?
Just advisory. So we do go through them, with them, as far as actions we have taken, plans we were making, or anything that we're looking at currently or in the future regarding COVID. So then we do bring it to them, and if they do have any comments, we try to adjust any of, anything that we are planning or working on, but everything. Most of them are community members and they're, most of them are part of our medical collaborative. So most of those, that information's already been shared more timely because, of course, as COVID, as we go through COVID, having information, it changes so fast. Having that type, that information more timely so we can adjust is very valuable. But, no, they do have the ability to reach out if they need to.
Here, a few years ago, there was kind of a healthy foods alternative. Is that still functioning some, or is it considered in the future?
We still have food advisory. That's part of our health education. So that is, that is ongoing, and that is, is part of some of the grants that we're working on, is making sure that people understand there are healthy choices out there. And yes, that is, that is part of our food policy.
I would move, we approve the new guidelines for the Reno County Health Department Advisory Board.
Seconded.
Then moved and seconded to approve the guidelines revision for the Reno County Health Department Advisory Board. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the Kansas Department of Corrections, the Juvenile Services, Prevention and Graduated Sanctions Block Grant by Jessica Sissy. Is that right?
That is correct.
Yeah, I didn't. Interim Juvenile Intake and Assessment Supervisor for Youth Services. And I know how important and time-consuming that juvenile intake concerns.
Yes, thank you. We are requesting approval for the state fiscal year 2022 Kansas Department of Corrections Juvenile Services Comprehensive Plan Grant for the juvenile graduated sanctions and prevention programs in Reno County. This is an annual grant that provides for the graduated sanctions programs in Reno County, which include juvenile intake and assessment, the juvenile intensive supervision probation through Community Corrections, case management through Community Corrections, and then also provides funds for the prevention programs through Rise Up Reno, including their strength, or their, their school-based mentoring program that they run. The total request, grant request this year that we have been allocated, preliminary allocation, is $654,935.2. The grant period runs July 1st, 2021, through June 30th, 2022. This is a planning allocation based upon the Governor's Budget Request to the Kansas Legislature. The final allocation could change depending on if that, the budget changes at the state level.
Any questions or comments regarding the grant application?
I've got one, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your work. Does the county have, does it have any matching contribution to this, or is it just a full 100% grant?
This, these funds are 100% grant funds. Now, I believe the county matches for benefits.
If I, if I may, I'm sorry. This is all Kansas Department of Corrections money. All this, this is grant. The county doesn't put any money into any of this. So there are no benefits, no rent, anything like that. The services we receive are more in-kind services like the IT and HR types of things, but it's not any financial contribution out of the county.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sellers?
No, no questions.
I'd move to approve item 7B on the agenda.
Okay.
Seconded.
Then moved and seconded to approve the Kansas Department of Corrections Juvenile Services Prevention and Graduated Sanctions Block Grant for $654,935.2. Is there any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Communications update, Laura Ludy, our communications specialist.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So I've now been here for six months, so I just wanted to give you guys an update on where we're at with our communications plan and some of the projects we're working on. Through our 2021 communications plan, we came up with three main objectives that I was going to focus on for the year. First one, improve perception of Reno County, increase knowledge of Reno County departments and the services we offer, and increase our audience and reach. So three of the main projects we came up with to do that. Well, obviously, the Health Department COVID communication was a lot of what I did at the beginning, and we're kind of transitioning to promoting some of the other programs that they offer. Website redesign, which we are just now starting in two weeks, so I'll touch on that a little bit further. And departmental spotlights. So the Health Department communication, I have a list here of kind of our media campaign that we took. Part of that was electronic billboards. We had English and Spanish. So we came up with some ways to reach some of the different audiences that we couldn't through social media and website. We had a weekly ad in Hutchinson News. These are actually still running through next week as well. We had a weekly ad in the Rural Messenger to reach some of the more rural audience and also did an email blast through them. We had radio spots on every channel through Ego Radio and Ad Astra. And we changed these out every time we did a phase update or anything new that came up. We did produce flyers with general vaccine information in both English and Spanish, press releases in English and Spanish, obviously website updates, created new pages for the Health Department website. We did videos and photos at each of our events, and we kind of did a video walkthrough of the process for vaccination. And so, like I said, some kind of our larger expenditures are winding up. We'll be finishing those up in the next week, so we're looking at other ways to reach some of the underserved populations through some different avenues in media, so. And also transitioning to some of the different prevention, education, and community wellness programs. So we just filled up our Walk With Ease program through the Health Department. We're also promoting the Can Be Healthy and the Tobacco Cessation, which is taking place in May. So those are all grant funded, which I'm putting together some media schedules for that as well. It's kind of our Health Department and Wellness campaign that we just are finishing up. The website redesign is going to be a big project. We're beginning in another week. So I've sent out to each of the department heads kind of the next steps to review all of the content and make any updates. And I have formed a website committee. So we are going to be meeting to go over the templates and meeting with the administrator to, to kind of incorporate our new vision and mission and branding in that as well. And our monthly departmental spotlight is something that's been a really fun project. I've been able to get out and meet with the different departments, including the Sheriff's Department. This month, I will actually be posting emergency management update overview, which is done. We're just waiting on their final approval. We did, of course, a spotlight on all three of you commissioners to kind of introduce you to the public. And I've been producing other videos as well, such as the Drug Court video, which will be coming out, which I think is just an amazing program. I can't wait to showcase it and all that they do for the community. And of course, some fun things. I'll be going out to the Sheriff's Shooting Range this week as well. I did some of their driving training overview, which was a lot of fun. So to increase our audience and reach, I talked a little bit about how we're trying to find different avenues to reach some of those different demographics out in the county or some that aren't, don't have computer access. Some of our goals that we had also were increasing our social media audiences. We've actually met two of those goals already, just a couple of months in. So I need to work a lot on LinkedIn. We just started that page. So we'll be working on increasing our audience and followers for those. And something else that we are planning, it's the 150th anniversary for Reno County and Hutchinson. So we have a committee, actually, along with the city and some other partners in the community, to plan some events commemorating that kicking off in July. So look forward to hearing some more information on that.
Laurie, number one, I'd like to acknowledge that I think your first six months has been very successful here with the county. I think our publicity and things that you've been working on have been outstanding, and I think it shows the need for your position and so forth, and I'm very pleased with it. I do have a couple of questions or comments. Is your expectation that you'll be spending as much time on Health Department communication? Or will that, that ease off as time goes on and hopefully COVID moves on a little bit?
It actually has started to ease off, which I'm very happy with. But there will be a need for a while, obviously, as we have new vaccination events and things like that. It's definitely decreased significantly.
Will you stay involved with the Health Department communication approaches?
Yes, and they have, Carla and Karen are sending everything through me now for press releases.
I think that's good to do it that way. I think you have more expertise than their department in that. The second thing that you mentioned on website redesign, I'm glad you're looking at that. I just saw last week the Hutchinson Rec Commission just redesigned their website. You might want to look at that. I thought they hired it done two or three years ago, and I was advised it was five years ago. So time does go fast, and I guess the need to make these things more usable with phones instead of computers makes a difference on how they're done. I, I thought they did a good job of making it easy to move through the system. And obviously, the first or second generations of some of these websites have been a little struggling. I think there's some areas, hopefully, that will be so much easier to move to. But if you look at that Recreation Commission's website, I think it'd be interesting for you. I, I'm just very pleased that we created this position. My good friend Dan Deming had some interesting comments in the newspaper recently about public entities paying for communication. But I, I feel like it's, it's definitely a need to tell the public what their taxpayers, taxes are going towards. And where we used to be able to allow on media for that, I think we need to speak our own voice. So I'm very pleased with this position. I'm glad that it's been added to the county.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Likewise, I'd like to echo Commissioner Sellers' comments and thoughts. And, and, and thank you and recognize your hard work in the last six months. I, I think it's been great. It's obviously been a very hard, challenging time to be in, you know, government response for COVID. And I'm sure the Health Department's very thankful to have you behind them on the communication efforts. And I think we've done a very good job of communicating. And I think that was just one of the components of some of our successful vaccination efforts and some of the other things that, that we've been responding to in COVID. So thank you for that and for your partners at the Health Department. Kind of like Commissioner Sellers, I, over time, you know, have seen a lot of, of value in, in marketing and communication, and it's an intangible thing. And sometimes it's hard to quantify its value, and so it's easy to not do. And I think you really lose some important value in communicating who we are as a county and what we're doing. And, you know, I think there were certainly some complaints in the past about, you know, what, what is it that we are doing here? And, and how are we spending the money that the taxpayers have entrusted to us? And so I, I think this has value for sure as well. I too disagree with some of the comments that this is a waste of taxpayer money because it's, it's important. I would encourage you, on, on, on the goals section here, the Facebook RN and EMA, what does that mean?
I mean, it's two different Facebook sites. So we have our General Reno County, our name is Reno County, and Emergency Management Facebook page.
Well, I would encourage you to set higher goals since you blew through those so easily.
I will, yes.
And that's good. It's interesting that Emergency Management has four times the interest that our county Facebook page does, but I'm also in agreement with the revamp of our website. That thing is voluminous. It's very, it's got a lot of pages, and you can get lost in it. And I've noticed over time, I really appreciate your comment about keeping on departments and keeping things updated. I think once you accomplish a refresh, I would encourage you to keep, keep a, you know, a constant cadence on, on updates. I've noticed in the past, going to the website for certain things, and things are kind of outdated or missing. And so it's a challenge to keep a website like that up to date. So certainly a great part of the value you add. And then one thing, just an idea for you, I, I think Emergency Management's great to do in April. That's, that's going to be interesting. That's going to be interesting. One of the things that, when I visited Reno County Public Works, they have a pretty, pretty interesting operation out there in South Hutch. And I encouraged Don to have an open house out there just to show people what's going on. And, you know, I don't know if you could, you could work with him and maybe do a spotlight ahead of that to kind of draw people's interest. But people have heard comment in the past about our shiny trucks and they look new. And that's because he keeps them well-maintained. And if some, if the public was able to kind of see what he does out there, I think that would be of great value too. So, thanks for your work. Appreciate it.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here.
I appreciate the fact that you were provided information out to the weekly newspapers on the vaccination and the COVID and what was actually happening and the rates and so forth. That reaches a lot of people that normally wouldn't be on our website or things like that. And I certainly agree, the website is times difficult to manage for an old guy anyway. But I appreciate you working on that part of it.
I have some stats, if you'd like stats to share, that 56% of the people that come to our website actually do from a mobile device. So, we will be looking at that heavily during our redesign.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Darryl, for attending.
Thank you.
Now, we go into some budget requests. Reno County Drug Court, Liberty, Thompson, coordinator of that program. Hope everyone's had a chance to go up and attend one or two of those drug courts.
Yeah. First of all, good morning. Yeah, Reno County Drug Court, we're going into our 10th year this year. So, we're excited about that. That's why Lori is doing a video for us to kind of showcase that we actually have been around for 10 years and the value that we add to the community by rehabilitating lives. We do have a graduation coming up on May the 3rd. That takes place after Drug Court, so around like 3:15 in the Veterans Room, if any of you are interested in attending that.
Say 3:15 on May 3rd?
On May 3rd, right.
Downstairs in the courtroom?
Downstairs, exactly. Those are great events to go to because you can kind of see the change that people have made and the hard work that they've put in, in the program. Reno County Drug Court is requesting $10,000 in special alcohol tax funds from the county. A portion of that alcohol tax is supposed to go to drug-related rehabilitation programs. And the county's been really generous in giving us some of that money every year to operate. So, this year, we're requesting about $4,000 in recovery assistance. And what that encompasses is anything from educational programs, IDs, birth certificates, you know, things that help people get to work, RCAT tickets, just any kind of assistance to help people eliminate the barriers that they have to being more valuable in the community and being more successful. And then, the other portion of it, we're requesting for Oxford House rent. And the reason that we believe in Oxford House is because, you know, that is a great place for people to go after they get out of treatment. Because if we send somebody to treatment and then they just come home to the same environment, it's generally not safe or stable. And so, by placing somebody in an Oxford House and giving them assistance with rent, that gives them a chance then to look for work. They're in a safe environment and they can focus on their recovery. We spend about $10,000 just on Oxford House every year. So, it is a really great benefit to the program. Do you guys have any questions for me about Drug Court or who we serve, what we do?
You mentioned Oxford House. Does your department feel that that's still continuing to be as successful as it was first mentioned in media and so forth, the operational aspect?
Yes, yes, we do. I think we have a total of nine Oxford Houses now in Hutchinson. You know, that has been like a prevailing thought that there's a lot of people that use drugs in Reno County, that drug use is a problem in Reno County. But I feel like Oxford House has had turned that reputation from, you know, you can't be sober in Reno County to there is a very active recovery community in Reno County. And if you do want to be sober, then there's a lot of support available. And a huge chunk of that comes because of Oxford House. So, yes, for us, it's invaluable to what we do.
I have no more questions.
For a point of clarification, this is, are we, are we in a study session here? We're not voting on?
No, we're just receiving information from the funding groups that we funded in the past. They're outside agency type.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from the Conservation District. Are they here?
We had told people probably would be closer to 10 by the time we got to this, thinking the agenda would take longer. So, they're not here.
We have some others here. Dave is not here. So, Startup Hutch?
Well. I guess we'll first serve.
I guess so.
We moved you up.
I'm supposed to have a little backup here, but I told them they should get here early at 9:45. So, I think we're, but I can, we can go ahead and go. I had a presentation, I think. Now, can you remind me how long I'm supposed to go here, just so I don't bend your ear for too much longer than I'm supposed to?
Well, you have to cover what you need to cover, wouldn't you say?
All right. I will do my best. I will do my best to respect your time.
I'll go like this and.
All right. I'll keep an eye on you.
Jackson, the control for this is up there.
Perfect. All right. Well, welcome today. I'm Jackson Swer. I'm the Entrepreneur Navigator and Director at Startup Hutch, formerly the Quest Center for Entrepreneurs. This is our team. We've got myself on the left here and Dave DuKart, our former director, acting as our program administrator. Got a great, a great partnership that we built here, a good division of duties, and an expansion of what the Quest Center have been doing now under Startup Hutch. And I'm really excited to share some of that with you today and talk about what's coming up in the future. You know, I always want to start by saying, you know, what, why, why are we investing in entrepreneurship? And how is that so important to economic development in Reno County? And we know that businesses that get started here are, they root wealth in our community. And it's a critical way that we can start creating jobs here and grow those businesses and support our local entrepreneurs. But I do want to emphasize that, you know, we understand this is just one part of a broad and diverse scope of needs on economic development. And we have great relationships and strong partnerships with our other economic development partners here in Reno County, people like the Chamber and all of their other divisions, who I think you'll also be hearing from today. So, we're excited about the partnerships that have been built to work around entrepreneurship. And just to riff on that a little bit, I want to share a little bit about the Reno County Entrepreneurship Ecosystem Partnership. This is the new reformed vision for what was previously the Reno County Entrepreneurship Task Force. This was the task force that put together a five-year action plan that we are just now entering the second year of. And this contains many partners from around the state and around the county. Startup Hutch, of course, being one of the key organizations. This is being convened largely by the Hutchinson Community Foundation with partnerships from the city of Hutchinson, represented from the county as well. Network Kansas being a key statewide partner that comes in out of Wichita. The Community College is another key partner as well. They provide us with some space and also many resources for local entrepreneurs. And of course, we've got some entrepreneurs themselves on that partnership. And I just want to share that that group has reconvened. They will be doing a strengths and gap analysis of our entrepreneurship ecosystem. And we recognize that, of course, we've established an action plan that we're trying to work our way through. But we've just had one of the, probably one of the most significant economic disruptions that I'm going to see in my lifetime in COVID-19. And we know that we're going to have to adjust what we're doing going forward. And so, we're in the process of putting that together. But out of the original task force came a recognition that there were some needs, some changes that needed to be made. And this slide represents some of the change that's happened at Startup Hutch. I think you've all probably seen this before, but I like to include this particularly for anyone from the public who's looking at this. So, on the left, you can see kind of the past vision for what the Quest Center was. It was a place. It was a resource center, someplace that entrepreneurs could come to. And we have a vision going forward for how we're going to build entrepreneurship in Reno County, where we've got a network, a community of people who are working on these issues. And Startup Hutch is playing that role of helping to convene people within that network and to get people connected to the resources that they need. So, we know that we can't do it all. We have our own resources that we can provide within the system, and we can get people connected to the resources that they need if we don't have what they need to get going. I'd like to share a little bit about some of our recent accomplishments. Most of these come from 2020, but I am going to sneak in a couple of early 2021 successes here. First, I've got a slide here with a dashboard. This contains a series of metrics that the Entrepreneurship Task Force had decided that we were going to look at to try to measure some of the success as we work through this action plan. You can see here that we did meet our established goal for new business startups, but we're a little short on those other two key metrics for loan investment and also job creation. I would just note, to speak frankly, that coming out of the year that we just had with COVID, the fact that we've seen this amount of economic activity is in some ways remarkable to me and reflects the fact that we do have a lot of resources. And there were some people who were stepping out in the middle of the crisis to try to make some new things happen. Now, I'll also share that as we come into 2021, I don't think we've ever been as busy as we are right now with new inquiries and people trying to get things started. I think we are entering into a period of entrepreneurship growth that really hasn't been seen since maybe 2008, 2009. And there's a lot of opportunity for people at this moment. So, another thing I want to note here is I've got a little bit of a slash and an asterisk on some attendees at our events. We had to basically cease all of our in-person offerings in 2020. We did try to do a couple of events for folks that were not very well attended. Of course, there were lots of concerns about COVID. But we were able to move online. And in doing so, we were able to provide access to a lot of people, particularly people who didn't want to drive into Hutchinson. So, we really had a lot of folks tune into some of our online offerings. And I'm pretty excited about what we can do with that going forward. I'd like to highlight a few of the loans that we've made recently. And I think this is one of the areas where I'm going to sneak in a couple of first quarter 2021 successes. But these are three recent loans that we've done in the past year. The first one to Hutchinson Mental Health is one that we just closed on. That's a new business and represents a loan from the Kansas Community Investment Fund. That's through a partnership of Network Kansas and the Kansas Health Foundation. I highlight that one first because it's meeting a critical need for mental health in our community. Second, because it's accessing an outside source of loan capital that we brought into our community. So, that represents funds that we don't have to pony up, that we're bringing in. And third, because, you know, it's a, it's a new business, and I think that's a critical part of what we do. This middle one to the Traveling Bowl was actually a pretty small loan that we gave her out of a local ARBEG fund that we have. And that represents a business expansion. A local entrepreneur who saw an opportunity in the middle of COVID-19 to expand her business. She had a food truck, went into a brick and mortar location, but with a drive-through. It's a great fit for her business model. And her bowls still travel through the truck, through the drive-through, as she would say. And the last one there is Mullins Lanscaping and Irrigation. That represents an expansion of their business, but also a transition. They bought an existing business out on the corner of Apple Lane and 30th Street out there. And they are, they're investing in that property. You can see it as you drive by. And I'd like to highlight that one again because it's a transition between a previous owner and a new owner, a key area that we want to work on. And also because that used two different loan funds, one that we control here locally, the E-Community Fund, where the funds themselves actually come from Network Kansas, and another fund called Startup Kansas that Network Kansas administers. And then, we help them with some of the loan administration on the backend. So, that was a good partnership. We were able to layer together a couple of different sources of funding along with some bank financing in order to get that project done. Of course, I'll try to skip a little faster through some of these other ones. You know, we had some events and meetups, and we were able to do some online offerings. The Hot Seat is a new event that we're doing on Facebook Live and on Zoom. I'm going to take this opportunity to give a shameless plug that we've got one coming up on May 4th with a local entrepreneur, Dave Enske, who's bought Joe Maguire Insurance several years ago. He's going to talk to us a little bit about that process of buying an existing business. And he's also been involved in some of this Entrepreneurship Task Force work. So, looking forward to that. So, May 4th, look for that on Facebook. You can find a link to sign up. Hope to see everybody there. We've also had great success in growing our online community. This was an area, a point of emphasis for us when we, when I started about a year ago and we reframed it to Startup Hutch. We've done a couple of things here. We started a private Facebook group for Reno County entrepreneurs that, and people who want to support entrepreneurship. That's called the Startup Hutch Idea Exchange. Just this morning, we approved our 200th member to that group. So, we've got a lot of people who are local entrepreneurs or are interested in supporting local entrepreneurs, people here in Reno County who are, who are, that's a space where people can come together, ask questions. And then, we've also just, we've launched a new branding, new Facebook page, new website. And I checked this morning, and we've got 826 people following us on Facebook. So, we've really been able to get the word out about what we're doing and what's available to entrepreneurs. We'll continue to work to grow that community online and also, of course, with some more in-person events. I'm sure we'll get some people to just come in and talk to us as well. One annual event that we do is, ooh, we've got a, I've got a small issue with my lines there. We've got the Youth Entrepreneurship Challenge. What that, this past year was more successful than I think it's ever been. We had 45 students participate. Our goal was 30. So, we're 150% of the participation that we aimed for. We got Hutchinson High School to come in and compete. They had not competed in the past. So, we're excited about that. And they brought their A-team, the Sweet Treat, who won the whole competition. This is a couple of students there who also won a statewide DECA for this project. So, there are some pretty impressive young people out there who are thinking about becoming local entrepreneurs. And we want to support them and hope that they will go off and learn a lot and come back and start great businesses here in Reno County. We've also been working on developing some success stories. Always like to, got this nice picture of Holly from Holly Sweet Treats here. And we are using those to try to inspire other entrepreneurs and also to help people find the connections that they need. You know, maybe a story about a local entrepreneur will give people an idea and maybe somebody to talk to if they've got a question, say, about a commercial kitchen. You might reach out to Holly. And we've been developing some resources, a video library as well. You can see a few of these here. We're going to work on developing more of these in the coming year. But these are the three that we have so far about securing capital and marketing your business. And then, a little bit of advice from John Richardson, the Chair of our Building Trades Commission here in Hutchinson, and the Planning Commissioner about how to work with the city through any planning and zoning issues. And of course, I can't talk about what we did in 2020 without talking about how we reacted to COVID. So, Startup Hutch played a role in partnership, largely. So Startup Hutch played a role in partnership largely with Network Kansas on these Hire Loans and Restart Kansas Loans. Hire Loans were mostly administered by Network Kansas, but we handled the collection of the payments. This is the Hospitality Industry Relief Fund. And those have now all been converted to grants, so that, those are, those are off our books. We're not having to deal with them anymore. But that was a great opportunity for some local businesses, and then really converting them to grants really helped some of those businesses out. Restart Kansas Loans was an opportunity where we had some funds that were available on a very short-term timeline from Network Kansas that they'd gotten through some, some tax credits and some, and they were able to, we were able to leverage those and get those connected to some businesses in our community who needed it right in the middle of COVID when people needed some operational capital to keep going. And then, of course, we played a role in the Reno County Economic Recovery Task Force. All of you are familiar with that. And, you know, I tried my best to communicate everything that we could out to local entrepreneurs, to local small business owners, and just to try to be a conduit for that information as we had many different conduits of information, trying to answer people's questions and get it out there. Really happy with Reno County and the work that was done to try to bring in the business community and get that feedback and input on what we needed to do, all the way back from the start as we were planning how we were going to react to this through to, through to today. And of course, the bright side is we're now in this recovery period. So I think there's enormous momentum in the entrepreneurship community right now. There's a lot of people who are interested in starting things. There's been a major disruption, and there's also a lot of, frankly, there's a lot of capital available. There's some money coming down from the federal government. There's a lot of, there's a lot of opportunity here for folks, and we're seeing people being interested in starting things and trying to work with them on that. And we're also working together with the Reno County Economic Ecosystem Park, or sorry, Entrepreneurship Ecosystem Partnership to adapt that action plan that we had developed in the past to be sure that we are responding correctly to the economic environment post-COVID. So I'm going to quickly run through a few things we've got coming up. We're hoping to do something like a Shark Tank event. I'm going to skip right by that because I'm not sure we have the trademark allowed to talk, to talk about that. But we're, we're looking to provide some opportunity for people to maybe have a pitch competition, similar to like what we do with YEC, but for, for people who are trying to start businesses here. We're hoping to work with the Chamber later this year on something that we're calling the Double Dare Promotion to recognize Reno County businesses that have doubled in size, even if that's from one to two or two to four. And we're also hoping later in 2021, when we can get some folks together, to do some work around succession planning and business transition, try to bring in some resources for folks. We know that that's an area that needs emphasis in Reno County. There's a lot of businesses and people who are looking to transition out in the next five years, and we want to find local people to take over those businesses and keep them going. And of course, finally, the fun part, funding and budgets, you know, so this represents our local partnership and the five-year plan that was outlined. I've got, should be a little asterisk there next to 2021. We gave, on the city of Hutchinson, we gave them a break last year. We were going to ask for an increase in funding and didn't with all of COVID. And here, we're requesting from Reno County today that middle number, 2022, $70,000. That represents a decrease in funding of $12,500, as was planned and promised to the County Commission when we originally made this proposal. So we're confident that we can secure some additional funding from the city of Hutchinson, hoping to have some conversations with them here very shortly in the future. As you all know, your budget process kicks off a little bit before theirs, so we've got a little bit of a timing issue with trying to sort all of that out, but I'm, I'm very confident that we can do that. The Community Foundation is committed on this five-year action plan to $90,000 a year and greatly appreciate their support. I see Aubrey's just snuck into the back of the room here. I'm sure she can answer any questions if you wanted her to about anything related to their work on entrepreneurship. I want to also add, oh, that did not fit there at all. Well, there's supposed to be some more on this slide, but it's not going to work for me, so I'm just going to hang out here for a second. I want to add that the Hutchinson Community College isn't represented here. They don't provide monetary funds to what we do, but they are a critical partner, and they provide some in-kind resources for us. We've got free space there in that Peel Center, which was historically where the Quest Center offices were. They provide us with some IT support, a receptionist who helps us out. Of course, they help, they clean the building, all of that. We estimate that's between $30,000 and $40,000 worth of in-kind from the Hutchinson Community College. So that's a key partnership. And also, Network Kansas does come in and they provide a little bit of funding as needed around some programming related directly to their board-approved programs. Youth Entrepreneurship Challenge is an example of that. We provide some prizes to the students, for example, and they provide a little bit of funding for that. So that's also not represented here. And finally, I'll add that this list of funding doesn't represent the loan funds that we loan out of. That is largely the funding that is going out into the community to promote economic development, and I think that's a, that's a key factor. I was going to mention and forgot to, so I'm going to skip back for just a moment, that if, when you look at that $120,000 that we were able to loan out in 2020, really, a lot of that was COVID-related, but $31,000 of it was not. It was related to business expansions, and that corresponded to a $210,000 in matching funds, other economic activity that we were able to leverage in getting, in getting these businesses going. And if I could have counted the first quarter 2021 loan activity in those numbers, there'd be an additional $92,000 in loans already with $380,000 in matching funds from other outside sources. So we really are seeing a huge investment right now in local businesses and startups, all the way from Main Street Hutchinson out to Bueller and around at other areas of the county. So really excited to see that. Happy to talk to you guys about some of our, the way our overall budget is structured, but mostly, you know, it remains the same as in the past. We've got significant expenses around our personnel and, and doing some communications, and that we are able to use to leverage to get all of these loan funds out in the community. I always try to include this slide. Eventually, I'm going to have to get another picture once we can have another in-person event, and I'm sure Steve Snook is going to be happy to not be on every single one of my presentations. But, you know, this is all an experiment. We are trying to learn and work together with our partners to figure out what is needed for local entrepreneurs and to continuously adapt our offerings so that we are meeting those needs. And the more we try that, the more different things we try, I think the more successful we will be in this community. And that, of course, is that entrepreneurial mindset as well, so we try to keep that in frame. Any questions?
I'll start, if that's, yeah, Ms. Chairman. Jackson, thank you. Appreciate your efforts, you and Dave, and, see Jenny's here. Jenny, Jenny's current Chair and the Board and all the partners, Community Foundation. Obviously, I have some, some ongoing interest in this being past Chair of, of the Board, encouraged by your, your growth, and, and I really like how the, you know, we've kind of created a new kind of framework and basis through, through a marketing and communication effort. And clearly, you've, you've got things organized, which I think is a key step in, in your success. So thank you for that. Obviously, the last year was very challenging, and I'm, you know, what you and, and the staff and the Board did in the last year, being responsive to, to the needs of, of the business community was very much appreciated, and I understand that kind of put a wrench in, in the growth plans a little bit, but I think you responded in the appropriate way, like a, a lot of other nonprofit organizations in our community did. So I, I think to show some growth in, in that time while responding to kind of the ad hoc requests, I think is great. I appreciate you admitting some shortfalls in your goals, and I'm glad you're focused on those. I'm pretty bullish on, on this effort still. I think it's, we're getting, we're leveraging our community dollars very well here. If you looked at all of the partners, if you looked at, as we know, Community Foundation has made a five-year commitment to this program. Our partners over at the city of Hutch, I'm sure, will continue their part. With, with all of that, I, I've always been an advocate, you know, if we can, some of these softer areas of, of government involvement, if we can leverage our involvement with private and, and other partnerships, I think it's always a great idea. And so this next year, I think for the next three years, you know, I think it was the, the CEO of Merrill Lynch said that the next three years are going to be a Goldilocks period in America with unprecedented growth from a number of, of different variables, from the emergence out of COVID and some significant, you know, whether you agree with it or not, there's going to be significant governmental funding funneling back into our communities. And so I think we are now set up with your organization to capitalize greatly on that. While not specifically related, I think some of the next funding that we have coming down should be considered for efforts that, that we're doing in entrepreneurship and rooting wealth back in, into Reno County. And so I don't know what that is yet. I don't think we know exactly how much money we're, we're going to get, but I see a lot of value in doubling down on this, this effort and creating, you know, rooting more private investment that, that in the end creates a higher tax base and allows us to do what, what kind of one of my ultimate goals when I was Chair of, of the Startup Hutch was to reduce taxes in Reno County through, through growth. So thank you again. I'm very supportive. It's, it's great to see that we're, you know, you're asking for less. You know, you might, you might, you know, my opinion, we, we may need to keep it the same this year just to keep you on the right track to, to capture all of the, the outside funding that's available, but certainly very supportive and thankful for you and, and your organization's efforts.
Mr. Sellers?
I think you have just one question. Jackson, what have you, certainly the transition from the old style of, of what the Quest Center did to what you're doing now? I understand. What, what are you seeing around the state in other counties? Are some of them the old way and some the new? And are there certain places that you would say that you can look to, to learn from?
Well, to answer the first question, yes. I think there are certainly some places who are still doing it the old way, if you will. I do think that broadly across the state, in part because of some efforts that Network Kansas is doing, and they've got relationships with the entrepreneurship communities all around the state, there is a growing emphasis on, on looking at the whole ecosystem that supports entrepreneurs and trying to bring partners together. And there's a new statewide effort that they've just started, I think they had their second meeting yesterday, called Networked, where they're trying to bring together partners working on economic development with community philanthropy partners like the Community Foundation and the Kansas Health Foundation on the state level. To be honest, I think Reno County and the work that has taken place over the last three years to try to bring together those partners, the involvement of the Community Foundation and community philanthropy and economic development puts Reno County pretty close to the front edge of a wave of change about how people are approaching these issues around the state. I don't want to claim, I can't claim too much credit for that myself. I think a lot of work went into building that task force, and there's been a lot of leadership from the Community Foundation and the Kansas Health Foundation and some other key partners across the state in doing that. But my hope, Ron, is that people are looking to us for the model for how to do this well, actually.
Thank you.
I think you understated the fact that Network Kansas' perception of Reno County. I, I think from the get-go, they have done, you, others have done a lot towards setting a model up, that they go out and support that model to other places that aren't doing as well. So I think they look at Reno County as the forefront on this. I really do. And you have enhanced that, you and Dave have really enhanced that a lot. You answered one of my questions when I was asking what to do for outreach in the county. And so I, I appreciate your, your, your efforts in that area of updating to more recent use of, of media, so to speak, where the old model was you go out and visit. And this is much more efficient, I think, as long as people know that that's available. And I think that's something that, that be sure and remember that to let the, let the various county cities know about how to get ahold of you. I think one thing that you have skipped over a little bit, and I think you ought to be very proud of, and that is how much funds that you have available to leverage through many sources and how much actual, actual funds are on hand right now in Reno County. You have an, can you give me a rough estimate, around $400,000 or so?
Oh, yes, at least. More if we count some of the, yes. Actually, if we count Network Kansas, the number is something more like whatever we needed.
Yeah. But the fact that you have that availability, availability to use as matching funds and to, to work with other organizations, I don't think there's probably, if any counties have that kind of ability. And I congratulate you guys on that.
Well, thank you. I mean, that's one of my main goals and what I view as my purpose is to know what funds are available out there that we can tap and to try to match people to the right funds that fit what their project is. And having a lot of different opportunities available is.
That's all I have, unless one that worked with you a lot. Jenny has something, but private business.
Jenny, you want it?
This is fantastic. No, we're, we're so thankful for the support. It's exciting to see entrepreneurship taking off like it is, things developing, so I'm excited to, to, to do this venture with Jackson. He does a great job.
You can bring outside money into the county. That's a real benefit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we'll go back up to, up to the top. Conservation District by Chloe Wilson, District Manager of the Conservation District.
I sure am. I think I've had the opportunity to meet all of the people except for Danielle. As noted, I'm the District Manager for the Reno County Conservation District this year. It's our 75th year serving Reno County landowners and producers and conservation efforts here in Reno County, something that we're very proud of. What we do is basically three-pronged. We do conservation education. We administer a COSH program through the Division of Conservation in the State of Kansas. And, and we also help with our partner programs to advance conservation efforts. In normal years, obviously, education looks quite a bit different. This past year, we had to really pivot with youth education. We got some events off early in, in last year with our Ag and Conservation Days and our Water Festival, but then after that, we really got hijacked by COVID. And so we're really looking for 2021, 2022 school years to get back engaged with our students. But our, our adult education just pivoted. We already did a lot of workshops, a lot of engagement with adults in the field, and we just did more of that instead. And we, we've had a lot of opportunities to get out there and do regenerative workshops and soil health workshops. This coming Thursday, we're actually going to be doing a little workshop showcasing a new piece of equipment that we have for soil health here in Reno County. So if anybody's interested in experiencing one of these little field days, we'd be happy to have you there.
And when is that and what time?
It's, it's going to be at Sam Sanders. It's 1:40, 2:10, South Harren Road in, here in Hutchinson is that actual address, and it's 1:00 PM. And we're going to showcase our new crop roller. The Cheney Lake Watershed was able to get some grant funds to get a crop roller. There's. There's diverse benefits for that, that we'd be happy to showcase that at the actual event.
What date?
This Thursday. This Thursday.
That'll be his headquarters, farm headquarters?
Yeah, yeah, that's it. There's, it's a pretty sizable implement, so we're just going to do a little demonstration about how it's used on site before it gets out to be used in the county. Back to what other efforts that we do through the State, State of Kansas Water Plan Fund, the Division of Conservation, we, we get cost share funds to deliver to our local landowners and producers. And these can be funds for diverse projects, waterways, terrace restorations, alternate watering systems for livestock, also septic systems. I think we are the only entity in the county that's providing assistance, cost share assistance for septic systems. I'm sure you guys hear about septic systems in all kinds of other ways from contractors, but for us, we just get to help people get those implemented. We still look to the Health Department to have any regulations or teeth in the agreements, but, but we provide some assistance to get those projects completed. These dollars are available on a yearly basis, and these roughly 39,000 that we had for this last fiscal year, we anticipate that that's roughly $100,000 worth of actual property, real property improvements on the ground. We also have our partnerships that we're able to leverage even more activities for project implementation through NRCS, which is USDA program, Natural Resources Conservation Service. We are actually co-located in the service center with them in exchange for administrative support. We, we get technical assistance as well as office space and technical resources, I guess. And they were able to deliver a little over a million dollars in cost share assistance to Reno County landowners last year. And through the Cheney Lake Watershed, which is technically a sub-project of the Conservation District, we count two of their employees also as our employees. You probably are familiar with Lisa French, she's the, I think on the Planning Commission. She serves in diverse ways throughout the county, but they had about $120,000 in cost share assistance available. So collectively through our common organizations, through these flexible partnerships, we're really able to deliver a lot of conservation on the ground and a lot of technical assistance as well. As far as our budget request, we kept it static for 2022 at 47.5. The bulk of our expenses are really personnel, as noted in the budget request. I think our total operational budget for fiscal year 2022 is 191,450. Of that, 139,000 is personnel. And then other like equipment and building maintenance, INE administrative expenses around And then we do have some pass-through funds, and it's noted here, because this is what we have to submit to the state. I know that, again, these acronyms are not helpful. It's noted as the RAPS personnel expense. That's the Cheney Lake Water Quality Project. It's Water Resources and Protection was what that stands for. But through them, we, we pass through some of those administrative costs to handle their personnel expense, and that's fully refunded by a grant. You'll see in the receipt classifications that, that money just washes in one way and comes out the other. We also, and as far as our income, you will maybe see in there more so for our current year and last year, that we had quite a big bump for our state technical assistance funds. I, I mentioned last year that we got the opportunity to host a, a new position, an agricultural easement specialist here in Reno County, and those are grant dollars. And so that state technical assistance funds is basically grant dollars, and that's covering the personnel expense for this additional resource that we have here. I think that's all I have. You guys have any questions about what we're doing or where we're going?
State Technical Assistance Funds have dropped quite a bit. Could you explain?
Well, it started out heavy. You get more of the grant, it's a three-year term for that grant. And so it started out heavy where they gave us a big allotment on the front side, and then over time, we're just working through the end of those grant funds. So it's, it's really the full term of what we expected. But unless it's extended, which is a possibility, we may end up keeping this resource for more than three years, and then we get another grant period. But right now, we see this three-year term as likely to be ending.
Your cash carryover for the end of 2020 is significantly higher than the year before. Is that due to less program?
It is due to that state technical assistance funds. They, they gave us more of those grant dollars for the personnel expense for this agricultural easement specialist. So we're just, we're really just sitting on and managing those grant dollars that's allocated already for that personnel expense for this agricultural easement specialist. So it does look like we're a little cash rich, but that's all it is. It's allocated.
When did I hear you say that the portion of this budget will be lower on personnel cost in 2022? Did I hear you say that?
If I did say it, I don't think I meant to phrase it like that. Our, the personnel is roughly 139 between salary and.
The final thing, and I don't know how much you can inform us about my question here, but we're hearing a lot of things from the federal government that conservation is going to become even more important at this point. And I know it's early on in the conversation. How do you feel that that's going to affect your department?
Well, I can already see it happening, actually. The Conservation Reserve Program, which is a federal program through the Farm Bell, and they, they're currently under a sign-up, and they didn't have a deadline set, which is kind of unusual inside the federal government. Normally, they would have a deadline set, and we anticipated it would have been January, but they've just kind of been kicking the can out, and we knew this new administration was coming in. The rental rates were lower, though, for the CRP signup. And so participation hasn't been where they anticipated they wanted it to be. And so they have just this last week said that they're going to revise those rental rates, and it's going to probably have more participation. And I didn't really mention it in here, I know I did in the letter, but one of the things the Conservation District does is we sell seed and we rent grass drills to plant those CRP acres. And so actually, just before I came here today, I was hauling grass seed to get it out to a customer because he's getting ready to plant. It's, it's one of those core things that we do just, there's not a lot of dealers that deal in, in need of grass seeds, and that's one of the things that we do. And we reinvest those dollars. And likely this year, any, any excess that we would get would go right back into a grass row to be rentable or used here in Reno County.
Any other questions? Mr. Free?
I, I think you will definitely see if, if Villasack does what he says he's going to do and is, and is allowed to do what he's going to do, then, then that 30-30 program will funnel down more money out to conservation, to the ag sector as far as conservation, and hopefully some of it you can utilize to perform your functions with in place of actually owning ground. And so if, if that follows through, I, I think that you will see more dollars, hopefully. But we don't know, but if, but if it follow through.
But, you know, Reno County stands to really win in that regard. There's over 1,500 farms here in Reno County. That's a potentially large source of the extra income coming through, stable income for Reno County farmers to implement those conservation practices and make their farms more profitable, because that's what we see. Anyhow, thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you.
Emergency Medical Services, Dave Johnston, EMS chief.
Welcome again, everybody. Good morning. Thank you for having me. All right. Well, I have a few slides to run through, and I want to give you just a quick update on operational numbers over the past year, how things have gone. We meet on a quarterly basis with Commissioner Hurst and County Administrator to ensure you're up to date on what we're doing. So I'll highlight last year where we stand. Obviously, through COVID, we actually had a bit of a decrease in call volume during those months, March through June. So overall, we ended up with about a 1% decrease in total call volume. And the bigger number was actually, we ended up with about a 6% decrease in transports. And for us, the, the transports are really what translate to the revenue generation for EMS. So out of this, you'll see highlighted in black that our numbers have come back up to normal. We're looking, we're currently about 2% above 19 in our numbers thus far for the first quarter here. So we're on track. We're hoping that our, our numbers will fully return and hopefully will surpass our 19 numbers in total call volume and total transports. Just highlighting overall performance, I want to show that we're being timely in our responses to the different communities we serve. In Hutchinson, our average response time is just a little over five minutes. You will see that out in some of the, the more rural parts of the county, that our response times do extend out some. But overall, if you look at our medics units, those are the ambulances and where they're positioned, Medic One, Medic Four and Five are all out of the hospital and a fairly short response time. Medic Three, you'll see, which is our Arlington station, has some of the longer response times out to the rural and western parts of the community. So overall, our, our response times average out to about six minutes for total responses in the county. So as, as we look at the type of calls we encounter, this is looking at 2020, our, our top call is, is always pretty much falls. So we encounter a lot of falls in the community, followed by difficulty breathing. You'll see number three comes in with transfers. We do a lot of inter-facility transfers where we move patients from perhaps Hutch Regional down to either one of the hospitals in Wichita. So our overall cardiac arrest numbers were down around 100 for the year. So the combination of call volumes combined with the acuity of our patients, this is just looking how sick the patients are in our community. We use triage colors to describe how acutely sick someone is. So code yellow that you'll see up there, that's about 44% of our calls. And a code yellow means that that's a, someone who needs ALS services, but they're not critical at this point. So someone with difficulty breathing or chest pain, or one of our paramedics is going to provide, provide primary care, administer pain medications and additional treatments. The, the code green is our lowest acuity or lower acuity. We run about 49%. So the rest of the calls, the high acuity, where they're really sick and we have in cardiac arrest, severely injured trauma, only make up about 6% of our total call volume in 2020. I will highlight our, our COVID response for the year. In all, we screened about 3,500, almost 3,600 patients. And when we talk about screening, that's where our medics used a heightened level of PPE, and we were screening patients that typically had difficulty breathing, febrile. And you see, we, we followed the trend in the county. We spiked in, through November and December, and we've now plateaued down. So this is good, only about 41 encounters in March, and it continues to decline in April. I will say I'm, I'm happy that most of my full-time staff have received the vaccine. About 95% of my staff have been inoculated. So, all right, wrapping up our 2020 year, I'll, I'll head into requests that we have for this year. And I'll outline, when we're looking at our transport charges, we've, we've allocated for approximately 2% call volume increase. So we believe our transports should be up that much. We're on track currently with that. You'll also note in this, and I'll, I'll switch slides here in just a moment, our contractual adjustments, they are up also. So last year, we'd submitted, we had adjusted the budget for contractual write-offs of about 64%. Previous years have been hovering around 61%. So this looks like our adjusted gross revenues will be down again. It's what we're projecting. We've done things to address that, since as we've shortened our revenue cycle time. When I arrived, we were at 45 days. Today, we're billing yesterday's calls. We're processing those out to shorten the timeline on it. One of the things that affects us the most is what we call our payer mix, the community we serve. So our, our payer mix is the type of insurance carried. So typically Medicare is about 59% of the patients we encounter. 13% is Medicaid, and then the rest is filled in with, we have about a 9% on our, our self-pay. So each one of those have, have a different rate that we're expected to be reimbursed at. And as self-pay, I have our, our numbers through 2020, we're a little, almost $600,000 in self-pay type calls. Our collection rate or adjustment rate is, as we write off, we're only collecting about 1% out of that. So with Medicare, it's in the neighborhood of about 29%. So that's one of the things that impacts our adjusted gross revenue.
Why, what, why do we write, why are you, the contractual adjustments? Like, I've never understood this, and I'm sorry. I see, I see it on medical bills. You know, you're like, the rate's this, but then it's really this. And why don't you just charge the rate?
Well, because, one of the reasons is, is the rates are different for different insurance carriers. So as, as an example, well, we have contracted rates. So some of our commercial carriers, the rate is higher. It's a higher percentage of what they're going to reimburse off of what is charged. Some are capitated. Medicare, Medicaid are capitated. We're going to bill out 420, sorry, we'll bill out our normal amount, but off of Medicaid, the, the most are going to pay is a neighborhood of $426.
If you're writing off 68%, it's like, we're not even starting at the right number, seems like. Is it just how it works?
Typically, in, in the, in the field of healthcare.
Wouldn't you classify that as bad debt expense?
We have a bad debt expense that goes into that also for the self-pay.
Or private pay.
Private pay, and then we also enter into some that class, we only are classifying as charity pay.
Like, who pays the 100% rate?
Right now, currently, no one.
So why do you charge that rate?
Well, I'll have to go through with our, our finance department.
All right, I'm sorry. It's bizarre.
I understand where you're going.
Keep going, sorry.
No, no problem. I, I will highlight for this year in our operational expense, I've done our best to try and curtail that. And I, I'm going to flip forward a couple slides to show you that the parts that I can control are these operational expenses. This is our day-to-day expenditures, and we're keeping those in check. I'll show you that we were down in 2020 from 300, I'm sorry, 3 million, 3.4 million in 19 to 3.3, assisted by watching our salaries, watching maintenance in other areas, we're able to decrease that down. So I have asked for a slight increase in that this coming year. So those are areas that I can specifically can control. So I'll highlight on this, so it's down at the bottom, the total operating expense. I've asked for about a 2.3% increase over the previous year in our operating expense. And as I go through that, some of that is, is for discussion, is a piece on salaries. I've allocated up to a 3% increase in salaries. We haven't done any adjustments in a little over two years. Pieces in there, you'll see there's other things that we'll talk about as far as maintenance. And I'm hoping that if we look at some of the capital charges or capital plan on replacing units, that I can decrease in those maintenance charges reside within there. So you'll see also that I've submitted a piece for capital improvement. This includes for 2022, discussions on a new ambulance, a remounting of an ambulance, and then discussions on a lease. So I realize that we'll have some time before we come to final budget, that these are things that we're working through, trying to find alternate plans for financing the ambulance or our fleet. So one piece is we're working through grants, specifically out in the western part of the county. Other pieces that we're working through is perhaps using a lease program to move through that. And that capital is, is a big part of what we do. Just an update on our fleet, I'll just highlight, we have some ambulances with a lot of years on them, and we're end up spending quite a little bit on them. So this is a five-year expenditures on individual. spending quite a little bit on them. So this is a five-year expenditures on individual units. Let's see, I've tagged medic 36 in there. We spent about $65,000 on maintenance. These are individual ambulances. So our seven ambulances in the fleet. So we have some ones that are costing us a lot, and we want to move to replace them early on. I'll highlight, this also couples up with the mileage. I have medic 34 with over $230,000 on it, and medic 36 was about $166,000. Those are the ones I'm targeting this year to replace due to the high mileage and what I've spent on total maintenance on both of those trucks is to try and move through this this year. So my intent is to come back to the commission and discuss through financing options on this. But this could directly affect the capital requests that I've submitted in this, and hopefully decrease some of that initial request.
What's the new one cost?
A new one, so I have option, an ambulance replacement is in the neighborhood of $205,000. That's quotes from the last 30 days. Then a remount is where we take the actual patient box, and we'll remount those usually once. And we'll use the same manufacturer, and they'll put it onto a new chassis. And that's about $122,000 to $125,000 for that remount process.
We've gone up about $35,000 in a couple of years.
Yeah, they keep climbing.
If I remember my numbers about right.
That's, yeah, so I will tell you that they had almost a 3% increase from last fall when I had quotes. We go up, and we quote out several vendors to try and find the best price on these. So I'll come back to you and talk to you specifically about that if we decide to move forward in 2022 and provide some other updates on the fleet request. What questions do you have for me?
Commissioner Sellers?
I've always felt like I don't understand this, what you do as well as I should. And I try to learn, and I'm not learning very quickly. It does appear that you've done some things with your hiring to make the organization much more effective. That billing situation that you speak of was ridiculous. I don't understand why that was ever operating that way, but you inherited that and you fixed that. So I don't want to be a negative, but obviously, $1.8 million is a lot of money that the county spends for these services. It's 62% over the last five years on this budget. And serving the same number of population, I understand your reimbursement issues are difficult, but it, I guess I just would appreciate any expense savings that you can figure out to offset the lack of revenue that you get. I'm surprised that you only collect 32% of your billings. You know, I have Medicare and supplemental, and it seems like they pay most of the bills that people send in. But that must not be the case with the majority of the population.
I will say that occasionally, there's a disconnect between what those agencies pay versus the cost per transport. Medicare comes very close. As an example, Medicaid, which is about 13% of our cost, it doesn't come close.
It doesn't close.
Close. And I'll tell you, I'm working at the state level on that. It's not on Medicaid expansion, but there's a supplemental program that we're trying to move through with the provider tax. For us, looking at our own individual numbers, it could upwards of $120,000, which helps that. But that's a piece of legislation we tried to move through this year, and I think, hopefully, we'll be successful on that.
That's my only comment. It's, you know, as we look at our outside agencies that we fund, this is the expense right here.
Yes.
You know?
So, why can't you just raise the rates?
Well, we typically do, and it's on a set piece. But as I mentioned, some of the rates are capitated regardless of what we raise those rates to. And I've provided the county administrator kind of an outline of what our contractual rates are. Obviously, those are a little bit proprietary, and I'm sure that he'll be able to share that with you of what's been agreed upon by the different insurance companies for us. But some of those do fluctuate. So raising the rates on a particular set of commercial insurance, they've set their reimbursement at about 75% of our rates, and they'll pay that. So raising our rates will affect that one. But it will not affect Medicaid, will not affect Medicare, because those rates are set by the feds, and they don't increase for us.
Well, I guess, sorry, I'm just trying to figure it out. But it just seems weird that if you have expenses, you should be able to charge at least those expenses back to the users that are using the services. And the insurance carrier should pay. You're saying, they say they won't pay. And the word, so the government just has to make up the difference for the insurance carrier?
I think that there's some pieces in there, such as with CMS, which provides, Center for Medicare Services, they've set their rates. And as a provider of that, we sign a contract agreeing to accept those rates. Otherwise, we're not able to bill for those rates. And once we've agreed upon a collection rate, we're not able to bill the individual patient for the remaining amount.
What if you tell them you need more?
We are doing that. I will say, I'm working at the state level, and I work at the federal level, specifically with CMS. We have a bill getting ready to move forward to ask for an additional bump in our Medicare rate. I don't know whether that'll be successful or not, but we are trying to request that.
I just, I feel like we're contributing to the problem by giving, like, I understand we need these services, and we got to pay for them if we have to. But when the, when the insurance carriers push on you to agree to a rate, that makes you come back here and ask for more money. And it seems like it should be the other way around. We should say, we're not, we shouldn't subsidize this. The user should pay for the service, like any other service. I don't, I don't know why this is different than.
I don't disagree with you. I would say that it's complex and difficult to get through. I do want to share with you that we're trying to be very good stewards of the funds you give us.
Yeah, and I'm not disagreeing with you there. It just, it seems like it's an easy thing to say, we're not going to pay anymore. And then the only place you have to come is the taxpayer.
But Daniel, a significant number of his users are either uninsured or non-insured at all. And so he gets very, very little out of it. You know, it's, I don't think it's unique to your operation or Reno County or.
It's not. If you want to slide up just a moment, I did some comparables in a bit of a market analysis that looked at like-size agencies. I went at about 20 different agencies across the state of Kansas, and looking what is being supplemented. Butler County is probably the most comparable to us as far as call volume employees. They do have a lower call volume and a few more employees than us. But if we look at that percent of their operating expenses covered by tax support, Butler County's sitting around 49% of their operating expenses. The budget I've asked for in this, and I do believe we'll have some room to adjust, is about 46% tax support. We'll be able to hopefully offset 54% of the cost by user fees. You look at some other ones, such as Riley County, it's much higher tax support. There are about 70% of the agency is supported through tax funding.
What percentage are you providing free service?
So I'll tell you that self-pay, which is one that we don't plug under.
Like cash?
Yeah, it is. They're not insurance. And then there's often some discussion of whether that moves in, whether they qualify for charity care or bad debt. So early numbers for '22 was about $600,000. It's what we charge. We collected less than $5,000, or $5,000 is what we'd collected. So 1% or less.
But to Commissioner Sellers' point, that should be what we're subsidizing, right?
Well, but Medicare's not paying enough to offset his expenses per that call, per his contract.
Medicare is huge. It's about 59% of our call volume, and Medicaid is 13%. As an example, Medicaid reimburses us about $181 on a typical non-critical emergency call. So it's a small percentage of the cost for that transport.
Commissioner Hirsch, you've been here the longest of any of us. We're giving Dave a hard time, and I don't apologize for that. But it does appear to me that the three years that I've heard these budgets, that it appears, and Commissioner Hirsch, what are your thoughts, that the hospital and your organization is doing a more conscientious job in the last couple of years of trying to control these costs. It appears to me that way. Now, some of these things can't be controlled.
Yeah, I, I think it's going to take a conscientious work on a lot of different people to maintain that percentage level at where we're at. And that includes both the hospital, EMS. It's going to, it's going to have to take a serious look at what we can do. You're starting to look at that just by looking at the fact that you can't continue to spend $65,000 a year on maintenance on a vehicle. That goes a long ways towards a, what do you call it, revamp or lease. That's something we have to look at. And I think it goes, this is probably a little carried away, but I think it goes beyond just this. I think as we, we need to look at retention of young. We need to look at opportunities to create the decision to move back to Reno County, move back to the county as a whole. And I think that would assist, because you have to increase your asset base in order to provide services that we expect and want. And either that, or we'll have to cut some services. It just boils down to that. So a constituted effort to recruit, and it's a broad scape, broad scope of everything. It takes time. But we have to recognize that this is where we could be at and where we need to be at. I know that's very general, but it's a fact that, that they're only going to pay so much, so many dollars, the insurance companies. It's, and part of that is to maintain profits for them.
On the back, so the taxpayer.
On the back to the taxpayer. That's right. It's kind of like the gas thing we went through.
So I appreciate that.
How do we work together to reduce this deficit?
I think that we are working at it now. I think the continued work that's going on with the county administrator and Commissioner Hirsch, as we meet with our transparency meetings, I think that we'll have some alternate solutions to bring forth in the coming months, trying to work through ways that the hospital and us can partner well together. We want to work well together. The hospital's very happy to provide the service for it, and we just want to be good partners with the county moving forward.
Is there ways to, like, intervene, like, just get people to the hospital on their own volition, you know, before they have an event? Or, you know, ways to, like, reduce the need for your services?
I do believe there is. I'll speak real quickly of one project that we've been working on with the 911 center and the fire department, is looking at some specific types of calls in the community. Ones where, when you call in through 911, they use an interrogation through EMD to determine what type of call. Already, we've adjusted some of those where fire departments not responding on some, because those, we're looking to find the ones where maybe we don't need to respond, or they don't need our care right away, and we can find alternate ways of getting them to the hospital or their primary care provider.
One thing Commissioner Friesen, as they worked on, it started a year ago, and that's what they call frequent flyers, those that call in just to call in, basically. And they've worked on sorting those out.
And cut their mileage points. And cut their mileage points.
Yes, yes. But.
We use the honorable term hugs, high-utilizer group. So we have a meeting on Friday again to cover some of those folks that use our services extensively.
Well, I think, excuse me, just a minute, if I may. Commissioner Bush started this by, several years ago, looking at long-range planning. And that's something we need to get back and get done. Don't you agree? That we need to look at, at lots of factors to plan out further ahead, to bring about, how can we reduce these costs in the future? And I think that's something that we've got, I know it's been in the back burner, and things in the last year haven't worked out quite as well as we'd like. But I think that's something we definitely proceed with, and I know you're looking at it.
Well, you know, I just want you to know, I support what you guys do in our community every day. And this is, this is a challenge, a financial challenge that we have to work together on, outside of, you know, your, you know, your duty to take care of the community. And so we know that's first. But I, I mean, I'm supportive of the budget. I would, in the future, maybe even this year, like to see, you know, how, you know, what, what percentage, I think it helps me to understand, like, we're subsidizing non-payers, we're subsidizing discounted contractual rates that are above our, our cost to operate. And then, as Chairman Hirsch, Hirst mentioned, you know, it certainly would be helpful to work together to find innovative ways to reduce the costs of operations. I don't know what that is, but I would be supportive of new programs that work towards that over time.
Yes.
So.
Well, thank you very much. Is there any other?
No, thank you. Any other?
Have you looked at lease purchasing your vehicles at low interest rates? I would think that that might be able to spread out your capital cost.
That is actually one that I'm going to come back to you and discuss on. There is the leasing option we have for those, and spread that out over five years with the lease to own.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll apologize. I didn't recognize Aubrey back there, who's been very, very astute partner in lots of different projects. And I think maybe I might read of something about you the other day in a university paper, but maybe not.
Really?
Anyway, just wanted to recognize and support.
She's up, isn't she? She's going to make a presentation?
No.
No?
Are you?
I'm just here to be supportive.
That's what I thought. So Deborah, you can feel free to call upon her Economic Development Council with Deborah Duful, Chamber of Representatives. Aunt Lacy's here.
Good morning, Commissioners. It's great to be here. I think this will be a change of pace a little bit. I'm excited to get to talk about the activities that fall under the chamber. But really, today, we're here to talk about two of our divisions that work to market Reno County and our communities and all of our wonderful assets. And we're really proud of those two. So in your packet, you have budget requests for two of our divisions, Market Hutch and Greater Hutch. And in a nutshell, Market Hutch created, a couple of decades ago at least. Greater Hutch, and in a nutshell, Market Hutch, created a couple of decades ago at least, is all about growing our trade capture as a county with the goal of increasing sales tax, and I think it's wonderful to see that sales tax remaining healthy in the midst of a pandemic, and maybe in some small part, Market Hutch has played a role in reminding people that there are still great places to shop and engage in commerce here in the community, and then Greater Hutch, our Economic Development Division. So you support both of these with a combined total funding of fifty thousand dollars, which you then allow us to kind of allocate across our budgets as we see the needs arise. We're requesting level funding from what you allocated last year for that total of fifty thousand, and so for Market Hutch, we're requesting fourteen thousand dollars. That is supplemented by ninety-five thousand dollars from the City of Hutchinson, which makes up all of our marketing budget for destination retail sales. And then Greater Hutch, again, level funding expectations from the city and the county. The city also supports Greater Hutch to the tune of ninety-five thousand dollars a year. We're expecting to ask the same for that division again this year, and thirty-six thousand dollars from Reno County. I will highlight here that the private sector pledges really then help us get the meat of the work done. We couldn't do this work with just public sector funding. It takes all of our private sector pulling together to enable our economic development program, and we do that under a five-year campaign. The last five years was under the campaign Hutch Rising, and we're going into campaign year, so I'll have an explanation here. Generally, our private sector pledges equate to roughly three hundred thousand dollars a year, which is where we expect fiscal year twenty-two to be. Because the Hutch Rising campaign that was carried out in twenty sixteen, used an outside fundraising source, they basically paid it forward and charged that expense for that marketing firm that did the campaign the last time, and so it's coming out of the back end of the campaign year here. So we have a little bit less funding to work with in fiscal year twenty-one. It's okay because we've been able to do more things virtually this year. We aren't going out to as many trade shows, so we're able to stretch those dollars farther. But we are going into campaign season. In June, we will have our kickoff campaign, and this year it's going to be called Reno Rising. I think it's important that we see ourselves as one Reno County, and even though our branding to the outside world for our marketing is under the brand of Greater Hutch and all of our website is built under Greater Hutch, I think when we're speaking to the value of economic development, we need to talk about that value as one county. So Reno Rising Campaign Event will kick off on June third. We'll have a breakfast that you will be invited to, along with all of our other private sector contributors, and then we'll be in campaign mode for the balance of this year, and we're going to do that campaign in-house, so we don't send those dollars outside. And I think that's the most responsible thing to do, given the environment we're in. So I'm gonna just highlight a few things that, the activities of Market Hutch and Greater Hutch, if you'll allow me to do so, and I don't know why, but this isn't aligning very good. Is there a way to adjust that so we're not cutting off the top of the slide?
Well, I don't.
Okay, okay, that's better.
New facilities do experiment.
It's beautiful, by the way. This is a great presentation room, it's good to be here. So Market Hutch is governed by a committee that you actually have an appointed representative on. It's overseen by a committee that's chaired this year by Lacy Deppenbush. Leanne Cox, our Visit Hutch Vice President, actually manages the committee, if you will. We have a board of directors representative with Holly Thomas from Holly Sweet Treats, and then members at large that come from either retail or our destination tourism locations, as well as our major funding partners being the city and the county. So Lori Moody is your representative on the Market Hutch Committee. That committee knows that the value of destination tourism is of utmost importance to our economy. So I just wanna pull this number from an economic report from 2019, that in that year, twelve hundred direct jobs were supported by tourism in Reno County, and when you add the indirect and induced jobs, that supports sixteen hundred jobs in our community and brings in an economic impact of a hundred and sixteen million dollars. So that is huge, and we obviously have various aspects to tourism, but we do think destination retail tourism is an important component, and that's where we capture those people that are coming in, we want to keep them here and have them spending money in our venues. So the Market Hutch funds predominantly then help us carry out some marketing campaigns that are very targeted to those visitors and to a regional trade capture area. So some examples, last year, we did some summer and outdoor fun campaigns highlighting things like Salt City Splash, our Hutch Putt, various shopping venues. Leading into holiday season, we obviously do more about shopping in our communities, and we geofence some of the surrounding communities with some of our ads. And so you can see there the number of ad views, a hundred and seventy-five thousand ad views from those campaigns are pretty significant, and then we measure the click-throughs and how that equates to dollars flowing through the community. We also do a cooperative marketing program. This is usually a partnership with some of our major media partners, and this year we added digital billboards as well as some TV advertising. So we take our marketing dollars and pre-buy some of those spots and then leverage that with businesses that wish to participate with their own dollars, and it just stretches that marketing dollar further and gives us more buying power, if you will. So you typically will see, especially during holiday time, you can see the Shop Hutch logo there come across, and then you'll see it's on KWCH and KSN as well as digital billboards. Some ad campaigns that we have embarked on this year are focused on a little bit differently. On, the first quarter was on Girls Day Out. We have some wonderful new venues in our community, from Splinters and Russ to the Board and Brush to Lit Studios. There's a new Smash Pad here in town, as well as just lots of shopping and salons. And so that ad campaign was all focused on that. It was a thirty-second spot that aired both on broadcast TV as well as the streaming TV applications that many people are using, and we also have it formatted for YouTube. So if you go to our YouTube channel, you can see that ad there. This quarter, you hopefully have seen the spring sports campaign, and we've had some great sports events already happening. Last week, obviously NJCAA Men's Basketball Championship was highlighted. It also highlights the fact that the Big Twelve Golf Tournament is here out at Prairie Dunes, and the, all the ball events that happen at Fun Valley and around our communities. So we love our sports here, and I think it's important that we target those people from, especially Wichita area, that may wanna come over and engage in some great sporting activities. Move along to Greater Hutch, just to keep us moving. Again, this alignment's, you know, kinda, I'll just reference my slides so I don't cut off some of the text there. Our priorities in twenty-one have really continued to evolve as the needs of economic development continue to change, but the one thing that underpins what we do every day is business recruitment and expansion. You're going to see that on some of the slides, examples of projects that we've worked on. The number one thing, though, that underpins all of this is the ability to have a workforce that is ready and skilled up for those opportunities, and it's probably the number one call I take every day, is a business calling saying, "I can't find people, how can you help me find people to go to work?" An example, last week, email from Mike Bergmeyer with Shield Ag, I know he won't mind me saying, "They have five openings and they need to find people." At our membership breakfast last week, Dave Kerr was there, and he said Kansas Protein Foods needs five people, like, everyone has a need for people, and so I'll talk about some things we're doing to try to work on those workforce challenges. We know that they are big challenges and things that even the community foundation has found as priorities, and the fact that we have lack of childcare. We need more childcare slots and facilities, and it's definitely a strain on our workforce system, as well as, you've probably been hearing the pressure on the housing market, that we have fewer homes on the market, they're selling as quickly as folks can list them. And on one hand, that's an opportunity, but it is also a challenge in that if you're recruiting someone to town, they do need a place to live. Another aspect that we will always be engaged in is that real estate promotion and development, and you'll find that on our website, and we're gonna talk about some new opportunities there. We also will share some about how we market through our partners, through Team Kansas, through the Greater Wichita Partnership, also a lead generation service that we engage in through the Site Location Partnership. You hopefully have heard about Kansas Department of Commerce's new Framework for Growth. Over the last two years, it was the first time since nineteen eighty-six that our state has worked on a comprehensive economic development strategy for the state. They have rolled it out as the Kansas Framework for Growth, and it will embody almost everything that we do to try to support new business growth, support entrepreneurship, support that spirit of innovation in our universities that drives that entrepreneurial spirit, as well as focusing on our workforce challenges. We've started doing some new things to geo-target as well to the coasts, where we believe there are people as well as companies that may have a desire to move to the Midwest for a lot of reasons, so that's a new strategy that we're undertaking. Our state has started a new certified sites program that will talk about why we have a need for new certified sites. And then, just working on our industry diversification strategy, I told you last year when Janet Adie was here, we learned that we're the eleventh most diversified county in the country from an industry perspective, and that serves us well. I think it's one of the reasons that we can weather these storms like a pandemic well. It hasn't hit any one industry sector particularly hard. But on the other hand, we do need to do some work on our diversification, and I think one way we can do that is capitalizing on our strengths, both in healthcare as well as manufacturing. And then, lastly, just a continued focus on how we leverage these partnerships, and I think it was really important that Jackson and I are both here on the same day to talk about how entrepreneurship and the other aspects of economic development work hand-in-hand. Jackson has his lane, we have our lane, but then there are a lot of areas where we must partner, and it's because we're trying to leverage as many resources as we can together. You're also going to hear about some programs that we work in partnership with Hutch Rec and the Boys and Girls Club. All of these things are just such important aspects of our quality of life and our ecosystem, and it's the reason why I put that little three-legged stool icon. That came from Janet Adie's presentation at our Economic Forum last year about how placemaking and talent development and business development go hand-in-hand, and one can't live without the other. It's why investing in aspects of quality of life continue to make our community a place that people want to live and raise a family. And then, lastly, obviously, and maybe most importantly this year, is our private sector fundraising campaign to take us into the next five years. Here's some examples of just the business retention and expansion visits that we do, and business listening tours that we go on around the community. These are just a few examples, Kincade Manufacturing, doing some great things to diversify and reach new markets. Superior Boiler, we're gonna talk about a great expansion of theirs. Kansas Protein Foods was a project from three years ago that continues to do great, and now we just need to find them some more people. Down there in the bottom right, you see Wifco. Wifco is a company that has been a mainstay here, serving the oil and gas industry with a great manufactured steel product, but at the same time, oil and gas had taken a downturn in twenty twenty, and so we had several engagements with them about how we can help them reach some new markets. And then Collins Bus, again, investing in new product lines. They've had some realignment in some of their product lines out there, but also a company that's doing great things and hiring here in the community. So workforce initiatives. You're gonna hear more about what we're doing to partner with the Community College, with our Career and Tech Ed Academy, attending job fairs to promote not only the jobs that we have, but matching the people that are looking with those jobs. And so you see a picture of Lacy Jansen there, I have to point to Lacy here in the crowd. Lacy is our project manager for Greater Hutch, and she wears a couple of hats. She's also the Downtown Hutch manager that manages that Main Street program. But in this picture, on this day, she was working at the booth at the HCC Job Fair. There, we got to see lots of young people that are hungry and interested for jobs, but as many or more companies there that were all clamoring for those same limited pool of workforce. So we engage with them on plugging them into the Summer Intern Hutch Program. We also engage with our businesses doing backstage pass tours for newcomers that are new recruits for our companies. We've stood up a job portal on our website, and we're gonna show some website stats that show that's one of the highest-traffic pages on our website, and as well as some partnerships we're doing with Epic Skills. And then, new in twenty twenty-one, and something that Lacy is working hard at, are two events coming up in May and June. The first of those, on May sixth, at the Hutch Career and Tech Ed Academy, will be a signing day, and you probably are familiar with when you see high school students signing to go play a sport at a college. Well, we want to celebrate those kids that are signing on to their future, whether they're going into welding or machining or the Ag Diesel Program, or maybe the CNA or CMA Programs, and there's a whole host of various certificate and associate programs offered in partnership between HCTEA and the Community College. We're going to honor those kids that are going into those fields, they're gonna get to have a T-shirt that's sponsored by several of our members that indicates that they're signing, they're going to actually sign their letter of intent and hear from some speakers. In fact, the Deputy Secretary of Commerce will be here that afternoon, and he's going to speak to that group. So we're excited, we're going to have about, I think, a dozen businesses there with us, as well as just officials, and you're welcome to come out in any part of the day. We're going to have three sessions. I think that the rural school districts are going to come in the morning from nine to eleven. There's going to be kind of a mix of high school students and community college students in the noon hour, and then from one-thirty to three will be that last session, and I think that's all USD three oh eight. The next event in June that we are sponsoring with our Greater Hutch dollars is underwriting the cost of a Fast Track program that is being put on by Hutch Community College, and Fast Track is the future apprenticeship success training. This is the first time we've tried this, we're going to see how it goes. It's for students that are eighteen, ready to kind of get some additional manufacturing skills under their belt, and they're also going to get to go out and visit a business each afternoon and learn a little bit about the industrial jobs in our community, and then hopefully at the end of that, we'll have a hiring day, and they can actually sign on for an apprenticeship. So again, just, we couldn't do this without the great partners that make all of these programs happen. A few success stories that I wanna highlight, some of this is old news because it happened in twenty twenty, but I think it's always important to celebrate that we have wonderful companies here in Reno County that continue to reinvest here. J&amp;J Drainage just completed their expansion, and right here in the heart of Hutchinson, they're a steel pipe manufacturer, they've been here since nineteen forty-six, and this will allow them to really modernize their production and enhance their production capacity as well. So kudos to Margie Doden and her team over at J&amp;J Drainage. The next one you see here is Superior Boiler, and you're gonna hear more about this. Superior made the announcement last year that they would be closing their Richmond, Virginia plant and bringing and consolidating all of that work here in Hutchinson, so they acquired the building on Cory Road. It's gonna be a great new manufacturing facility for them. Again, they're a company that's hiring actively right now, but they're also relocating people from Virginia, and we've seen our website traffic increase that we can tell from coming from Virginia, of people looking to move here, so that's exciting. Their team is working on a ribbon-cutting for that facility, and you'll all receive an invitation to that, I think it's going to happen the first week of September. This KMS project is one that was much awaited, and many months and maybe years of site visits ensued before we finally got the former Eaton facility sold, but it happened last fall. I remember the day in August, we were actually hosting the Secretary of Commerce, and we were about to go into a tour of Superior Boiler, when a call came in from Tom George. Tom is the owner and operator of KMS in Wichita. He had seen our listing for the Eaton building, started asking questions, we went over and saw him the next day, and within the next two weeks, the deal was done, and there were moments where we weren't sure it was going to happen. It really took someone with the wherewithal that wanted to take on the challenges of a building that was decades old and had a lot of electric and other infrastructure things that needed to be upgraded, but kudos to Tom and his team. Scott Miller is the plant manager here, and they are actively hiring as well. Most of their staffing is being done through some of our employment agencies here in town, but they are fully utilizing that three hundred and thirty thousand square feet, so it's great to see it being used. I think the reemerging theme here is kind of repurpose, reuse, and recycle buildings in Hutch, and that's what we're doing while we continue to work to attract new construction as well. And this last slide is just another representation of some other projects that were announced or worked on over the last couple of years. Great investment up on Thirtieth Street that AFIya Partners did, where you now see Genzada Pharmaceuticals in the headquarters for Geochemicals. Geochemicals also purchased the former consolidated plant and have continued to add on there, which is great. Kansas Protein Foods, like I said, up and going, repurposed that CHS facility. Blue Stem Pace will be opening soon, they purchased the former Dialysis Building up on Twenty-third, and will be opening up a new Blue Stem Pace Center here in Hutchinson, hopefully this quarter. this quarter. First Team Sports recently announced that they're going to be doing an expansion onto their physical plant, adding some additional square footage and investing a couple million dollars in that project. And then Lawrence Paper Company, American Packaging here in South Hutchinson, adding another $10 million of investment. So lots of great projects, and I have Ideatech up here because we're going to talk about a rural broadband project we did with them. So in total, since 2017, during the Hutch Rising Campaign period, we're just in the fifth year of that, we are at 341 of the 400 job creation goals, so we will hit it, I'm confident, this year. It's been a wonderful increase of local business expansion, augmented by some of these new business locations that we've been able to work on. And here you see in this photo, an example of some partnerships that we do with the state of Kansas. I don't love spending very many of our dollars on print advertising. However, a couple of times a year, there are some strategic things that we do partner on. So this magazine supplement that Kansas put out talks all about Kansas punching above our weight. Kansas has received some accolades in the last year for really outperforming many of the states in the country. I think we ranked up to top 10 in the country for new business expansion. And for the first time, Hutchinson and Reno County ranked up in the top 100 micro metropolitan areas by Site Selection Magazine, and so that publication came out in March, and we did purchase an ad, obviously, because we were recognized that we wanted to support it. That bar on the bottom just kind of shows from the period of 2015 to 2020 and into early '21, that increase in year-over-year prospects. Many of those prospects do come in through our Team Kansas partners, and it's one of our most strategic partnerships. Speaking of, so this photo, our three staff members of our Kansas Department of Commerce who visited here last fall, and they were all new to the Kansas Department of Commerce team, and so part of their learning curve to getting up to speed and being really the front line of business recruitment is learning about communities. And so we hosted them at our Economic Development Advisory Council. So Peter Ruiz there on the left, and Haley in the middle, who does research, and Jeff Freeman. Peter and Jeff work in various regions for our Department of Commerce. So Jeff covers the Great Lakes region, Peter is out in the California market, and they really are the front line of seeing projects that they bring to the state. Some examples, we just received one from Jeff this week, always has a short turnaround time, and so Lacey's kind of going to be back at the office working on getting this one ready by Thursday. They always come in under a project code name. This week's project is Project Squid. They are of various sizes, but typically, we see a lot of manufacturing projects, and the trend that we're seeing, especially from these two gentlemen, are larger and larger projects that require a bigger footprint. Anywhere upwards from 100 acres plus, which is why we really do need to start working on certified sites that are larger in scope. We only have 118 acres left in our industrial park, and it's configured in a way that there isn't any one parcel that you can really achieve 100-acre site. The project this week needs 120 to 160 acres for 1.7 million square foot facility. We're going to shoot for it because I don't want to get left out of the mix. I think sometimes prospects think they know what they need, and then later that need changes. So we're going to go ahead and submit the Enterprise Industrial Park. But a lot of the work that we'll be doing with the communities over the next year is really identifying that next phase of where industrial park land is available in our community. Frontier Commerce Park and Keep both have their advantages. Both are truly shovel-ready, but they also are rather landlocked. If you've been out to the Enterprise Industrial Park, you know that Cargill has land on the west. We have a borrow pit that was sold off for Highway 50 development on the east and Highway 50 on the south, and then all of Siemens facility on the north. So it really is landlocked for projects that are larger in scope. So you'll see us working really closely with community infrastructure partners to figure out how to solve that. Some other things that we do besides working with the Department of Commerce on enhancing marketing is subscribing, like I said, to the Site Location Partnership, where they do targeted marketing on behalf of our county. And this week, we have, I believe, over the next, this week and next, nine site selector visits virtually, where we're meeting with site selectors from the Atlanta market. It's really just kind of our sales pitch for 30 minutes, talking about our community and what projects they see on the horizon. We also, besides hosting the recruitment team, which is almost fully turned over and finally is fully staffed for the first time in seven years, try to get our Department of Commerce officials, like the Lieutenant Governor and Deputy Secretary here. So next week, when Bill Murphy's here, he's new to our state as well. He's going to be taking a tour of the community as well as being one of the presenters at Signing Day. Some other community capacity building initiatives that we help as the leverage for some other programs in the community. Rural Broadband, at every turn, you see that broadband needs in this state are great, and we're very lucky and fortunate to have a company like Ideatech here that's been deploying broadband services. Last year, they came to us and said, in the midst of the pandemic, we have a lot of underserved areas of Reno County that if we have the right resources, could be served. And so along with some Sparks funding from the state of Kansas, partnership from the Community Foundation with a loan, partnership with the United Way, as well as some Greater Hutch funding, we were able to provide a grant that enabled, I think, over 600 new locations to be served across Reno County. We also partner with Hutch Rec on the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative. This is the fourth year of that partnership, that we have increased our contribution to $20,000. That's leveraged with City of Hutch funds as well as Hutch Rec. And they do work in various neighborhoods throughout the county and community to really kind of be boots-on-the-ground grassroots neighborhood development initiatives, and it's a good partnership with Hutch Rec. A new initiative for us this year is the Boys and Girls Club. They have an Epic Skills Program that you can see some of the kids there in the summer program at the mine. The chamber has provided the space for the mine. The missing piece was a workforce coordinator that can really get these kids out and learning about those jobs out in the community. So they have advertised and are hiring for a workforce coordinator, and we are a $10,000 partner in that initiative as well. I talked about some of our Greater Hutch website. This is our external-facing site where we do marketing about all sorts of aspects of the community, from sites and buildings to workforce, and there's even community profile information here if existing employers are wanting to pull up average wages and that kind of information. But the statistics that I wanted to show you here is that, one, we've seen some increased traffic on our site since it was launched, but that spike in early 2021 really does point to the fact that doing some of that print advertising does pay off. It's the only thing that I can point to that would have increased our users on our website to 1,500 for the month of January and February. So just kind of proof positive that you have to have a multi-channel, multifaceted marketing strategy. And these are the top pages that were visited on our website. You can see in the top visitors by city that a couple of cities in Virginia started rising to the top, and that's all driven by Superior Boiler's relocation. And top pages visited, the top number two would be available job postings. We're trying to get more of our employers to not only list their jobs through traditional job channels, but through the job posting website portal on Greater Hutch, and then we take that out to career fairs and hand out cards and really drive traffic back to that page. A cool project that we're working on in the industrial park is a spec building project, and the reason for a spec building really is time to market is everything. What we're seeing on new manufacturing RFP leads that we get, our existing buildings get you in the game. And so the closer we can get to having either a spec building built, or at least a virtual rendering of it with permits pulled and ready to go, I think will get us in the game. It's having product on the shelf. So we're working with a local developer. This is his rendering of a 57,000-square-foot building in the industrial park, kind of laid out, showing how it can have rail access, keeping it very flexible so that it is expandable. And we're working on an agreement right now with City of Hutch and the developer, their lender, and Growth Inc. on a partnership agreement that we'll hopefully see that coming out of the ground very soon. So just to recap, some stats by the numbers. Last year, even in the midst of COVID, we did 13 backstage pass tours, and those are anything from hosting new candidates that are looking at taking employment at the hospital, to DCI, to some new ag positions in the community with some of the ag service agencies. So Lacey has been busy with backstage pass tours, and I see that number just increasing daily. Site visits hosted, we hosted 15. Even in the midst of COVID, there were still people coming with boots on the ground to look at our properties. We submitted on 30 RFPs last year, and then six projects announced that total 130 of those 341 jobs announced. Great increase in our website traffic. And then another just small division of the chamber, but it's a small but mighty division, is Downtown Hutch. And while you don't have a fundraising stake in it, I think it's important to mention, we have an active downtown coalition with 31 businesses that regularly come together around how we promote our downtown as a core element of the community, and that feeds right back into the destination retail. We've had, over the last year, seven IWW microloans issued, and that was just in 2020. Some of that was in response to the pandemic, some low-interest financing that helped get some businesses kind of through that difficult time. I know since the first of the year, we've done a couple of new projects, and one of the new processes that we've implemented is if we have a business applying for a loan through Downtown Hutch, we refer them also to Startup Hutch. The reason for that is we can leverage the various loan programs that Jackson offers, but also really encourage them to have that business coaching. I think the track record of businesses that get coaching on their business plan and really look at their project through another set of eyes are those that are going to be the most successful. So I can't say enough how important it is that we have the partnership with Startup Hutch. And then you can see just another recap of the Market Hutch marketing activities. And lastly, our Economic Development Advisory Council is the oversight of all of our economic development funding, and you can see the mix of businesses there, from manufacturing to professional services to lending and insurance, and our public sector partners as well. And Randy serves on the Economic Development Advisory Council, along with city and community college and board representation. We do have a vacancy. The city of South Hutch had appointed their new city clerk, and she has since moved on, and so we do have a vacancy in that position. And they oversee all of the investments that you all make, as well as the investment that our private sector makes in this important initiative, and it's been really good to work with Randy. We've started, as a practice, having, first Friday of every month, we have a meeting to talk about projects and long-range planning. And anyway, appreciate that partnership and your involvement in our organization. I'd stand for questions.
I think you've covered most everything, Deborah.
You're tired of hearing me, Ron?
I think you show that you're very active and have accomplished a lot in a tough environment.
We couldn't do it without the partnership, so appreciate your investment in what we do and seeing the value in it. It's the way that we're going to continue to grow the economy and address all the other budgetary challenges you have. The only way out of that is to continue to grow as a county, so we'll keep plugging away.
What was the amount you requested here?
We requested a total of $50,000, $14,000 for Market Hutch, $36,000 for Greater Hutch.
I don't see that as a very hard contribution for the county to make, given all of the work you've done here. It's clear you're doing a significant amount of work to grow our community and our tax base, so thank you for all that. I think we're probably like, you know, one of the things that I ran on for county commissioner is economic development and growing our tax base and turnover time, reducing our taxes because of that. And I think on the front end, we have to invest a little bit to do that. And I think if anything, we're probably a little low on our investment in economic development, I think, over the next couple of years, just like I told Jackson. I think it's a very unique time in our history to, you know, regardless of what you think is right or wrong as far as the amount of funding that's coming from the feds in the next few years, I think we have an opportunity to reinvest that in our community with opportunities that could be, that we could leverage private investment and grow our tax base. So I think this is the absolute minimum we need to be doing this year, and I think it's an opportunity. We have an opportunity to do a lot more, and I think we should.
I think I can speak on behalf of the other two commissioners that we are extremely fortunate to have you here as a leader of the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Ron. I can't do it without a great team, so appreciate everyone in the room that's part of that team.
Sorry, we haven't figured out when for you yet. We're still working on.
That's okay. In the spirit of talking about the American Recovery Plan Act, I would just like to say that it would be wonderful to see cities in Reno County and the county come together and strategize on how we can best use those funds to be visionary for the future. I think site development is something that could help all of our communities. I can think of a piece of land in South Hutch that if it had the right infrastructure would be a wonderful place for a new large site development, but they have their own challenges related to water capacity. And so if we can be visionary now and take this moment in time and use those resources maybe to partner, I would encourage us to think about that.
Go for it. Deborah, let us know what you need.
Okay.
I'll be happy to try to work with you in any possible, on these small communities out there.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you all for being here, presenting. Does anybody want a short break before we go on? Sure. Four minutes. Recce, and then go back into our regularly scheduled meeting with the county administrator's report. Andy?
First item I wanted to talk about was the law enforcement center, sorry, proposal. As the, as work has been done with the law enforcement center of the building connected to the courthouse, that the county leased to the city of Hutch for the police department also houses the emergency management department, the emergency operations center of the county. The county pays for 50% of 911 dispatch, which is run by the city of Hutchinson, and then the sheriff's office has a drug task force unit in that building. When the city took down the signage and painted the building, the signage before was law enforcement center only, and their plan now is to, on the left side of the building, put the city of Hutchinson logo, the police department logo, along with honesty, integrity, and professionalism as values. And then we talked to them about wanting to make sure that we, that the county wasn't left out, or we didn't leave out some signage possibilities. And so via email, there's agreement that the city of Hutch would pay for 50% of the cost for the law enforcement center lettering, which the cost of that, the total cost is $2,165.13. So it would be my recommendation for the county commission to give me direction to go ahead and allow for the law enforcement center lettering to be placed above the entry doors with the city paying for half of that cost. And then on the picture here is, we had also looked at what if we put another logo for the Reno County Emergency Management so that whether it's the fire districts that come in to meet with emergency management or anyone coming in that's needing to go to the emergency operations center, that they would kind of see a logo, knowing that they were at the right building. So we got a cost estimate and a design of what this logo, the emergency management logo, along with the department, would be. The cost for that is $14,409.20. I wanted to see from the county commission if you guys, if there's any interest in us pursuing that signage. pursuing that signage.
$14,000 is ours?
Yes, $14,400 is ours because the building before the painting and renovations only had Law Enforcement Center. It didn't have Police Department or Emergency Management on it.
I think, I think it looks nice. I, and I understand the point of, you know, we want to represent our departments as well, but I think the one sign has created kind of the need to equalize the other side. And, you know, we don't have signage for every department on the courthouse either.
Right.
So I don't.
Nor would the annex.
I mean, they have a nice sign out here. Does the emergency management have any particular position on this? I mean, nobody, they don't really have public visitors there, do they?
Not really public, I guess. If he has meetings, if Adam or Todd have meetings, they would have people come down there. If they have emergency training, NIMS training, they would have people go to the Emergency Operations Center, the fire district chiefs, if they need to come talk to him, they come through this entrance.
I just don't want to get caught up in the, well, you've got a big sign, now we need a big sign kind of thing, you know?
Yeah, we just wanted to give you, here's what it would cost.
It looks great. It looks great.
I like the looks of it. I have trouble with spending another $14,000. And I really would like to see it up there, but I think the notifications they give to fire departments, to anyone that's going to be coming in, they're going to tell them where to come in and out.
Which I think that would be why it would be important to have the Law Enforcement Center lettering. So I still would, you know.
I agree with that.
I can't speak to the proposal because of a conflict, but I think Commissioner Hurst, you're taking too short a view of the importance of, of our emergency management department. And I've, I've found through my two years that the director there and that department does so much for our county and he gets very little recognition in any way. And the building needs to be balanced off and they don't quit.
I agree with you, Commissioner. So he doesn't get the credit he really deserves.
That department, nobody knows about, he's involved in our safety tremendously.
He's done a great job.
And I shouldn't say he, the department, but it's, I think it's a small way to recognize the huge things that that group does.
The money for that sign would probably come out of reserve funds.
What's the cost of that sign?
That sign is the $14,000.
That's not the half of the law enforcement.
Not for the one that's the Reno County Emergency Management, no. That's $14,409. That would be all of Reno County's cost.
We do emergency work with the City of Hutchinson, too.
In my conversations via email or in person with the city is, it wasn't, they don't have the money or it wasn't their intent to put up signage for the county. So that's where they agreed 50% on the Law Enforcement Center lettering, but not on the emergency management. But yes, all of Reno County, whether it's in the City of Hutchinson, City of South Hutch, or in the unincorporated areas, is run by Reno County.
And again, Reno County has, what, two other departments in that?
The Drug Task Force.
Drug Task Force. Not really another department beyond that, but the dispatch, the city's dispatch is funded 50% by the county.
I think I'm representing the county in saying that the county should not allow that building to be solely identified as a police department. And I think there's a need to do something to show that there's something else inside that building.
Well, again, I, I don't think either Chairman Hurst or myself were wanting to discount all of the valuable work the Emergency Management Department has done. Maybe, I kind of, I kind of agree with you, Commissioner Sellers, on balancing and that this is our building and we do have people in it. I mean, to that extent, like, I really like the emergency management logo, but if we had, if we just said Reno County and put our departments that were there, is there, there's other departments?
Really, the only other department is the Sheriff's Office, but the other.
Is the Sheriff's Office part of this building in there?
With their drug task force. But that's only a.
I don't think that's a.
It's a small area.
Randy? Is there not the Fender Registry Office? And we also fund the District Court, which is there? I mean, there's not.
Right, there's, yeah. It's more than just emergency management that the county pays for.
Why don't we just got rid of both signs and just said Law Enforcement Center?
It could be a conversation with the city, but since they have a lease, I don't know if they, I believe they have the right to put their logo on the, on the building that they're leasing.
See this set aside for another meeting and so we can see some more conversations that we have intended on having also with personnel and look at it maybe next meeting. That's kind of where I would be at.
Would that be a sign for both the emergency management and the Law Enforcement Center?
Well, I think the Law Enforcement Center sign is fine.
Okay. But that's for the emergency management?
We look at, see what, see what, since there's other departments in there, too. And I really think we don't need to advertise all departments of the county. I'd just like to set aside for the next meeting to where we can look at this a little further, if that's all right with the rest of the community.
Okay. I also wanted to bring up that the special commission session that was scheduled for this Thursday was for the fire study. Bruce from Five Bugle in Wisconsin was going to come down. That has been moved to Friday, May 7th, so next week. And that will begin at 8:30 a.m. in this room. And that will be televised. We'll televise it like we are here today.
Are we going to get anything ahead of time?
I'll check with him to see if he's going to report to us in advance.
I think it'd be helpful if possible.
I'll look into it.
Thank you for everyone's flexibility there.
And then I wanted to bring up the other thing, sales tax. Can see Brenda emailed last night at the numbers for April with collections of actual February, $362,888, which is above 2020 and future years. We're now, year to date, 2021 versus 2020, 113%. So I just kind of wanted to bring this up to your attention, that the sales tax numbers are still coming in higher than previous year. So we're still in good shape there. That's all I have.
Mr. Sellers, comments?
I've been thinking about Commissioner Freezin's thought about doing away with the written meaning minutes. And of course, Randy will have to check on the legality of that. I think maybe a minimal amount of minutes is still necessary in my mind. I could see people not wanting to go to the videos, but the other factor I'd like you to consider would be is how long are we keeping those videos available? Because minutes last forever. But I like your idea and your thought that maybe decreasing the intensity of the minutes and also getting them back as soon as possible would be a positive. But as I was reading them this week, some of that stuff was so far back that I had to struggle remembering exactly what we were doing. So a good, good point by Commissioner Freezin. That's all I have.
Mr. Freezin?
Yeah, and I agree. I think we need to have a minimum set of, you know, printed physical records in the archives. I would hope we would keep our electronic records in perpetuity as well. Those are a little more in the cloud, if you will. I wanted to just reemphasize the opportunity for everyone in the county to get the COVID-19 vaccine if they want it. You can get, you can sign up at the county's website. You can go to Dylan's and get it, you know, pretty much anytime you want. So it's readily available. I think, you know, there's been a little bit of a trend up in the numbers, nothing significant at this point, but I suspect there may be something larger in fall and winter again. And I think it's very important, at least from my perspective as a policymaker, that people take advantage of the tools we're giving them, like a vaccine. And I'd hate to be in a situation where, you know, people die because they don't, they don't have the vaccine and they have the opportunity to get it. So I just want to remind everybody that they have the opportunity at any time now to get the vaccine if they so choose. I wanted to comment on Chairman Hurst's idea of, you know, there was an article related to getting community feedback and his comments from previous commission meeting related to zoning the rest of the county. I don't, I personally don't see any reason why we can't solicit input from, from the non-zoned rural residents in Reno County as to what their, their interest is in being zoned. I mean, it would certainly be a factor in some of the ongoing discussions we're having related to unzoned areas of potential wind development and so forth. So I don't know if that, just something that we can, we can issue to the planning commission or if they're already working on it. But I don't see anything wrong with working on that. I just wanted to make sure that, my other comments from last two weeks ago weren't confused that, I don't see any harm in having those discussions, I guess. I just also want to thank the Health Department for their continued communication with me on questions I've had personally as a commissioner. Certainly, they continue to be busy with all their efforts and appreciate their help understanding some of the things that they're working on ongoing with COVID-19. I think, Mr. Chairman?
Take this topic right away. Administrator Randy and I have had conversations regarding some pre-things regarding the possibility of reaching out to those zoned areas. And I think he has a really good idea that he can visit with, or will be visiting with Mark about and putting together some pre-information in the form of a video. And then I will be going out also in our conversation and trying to gauge the interest out there in any, in having any informational meetings throughout my district at least. We border up in kind of the northwest area. And so we'll be, there'll be a lot of conversations out there.
I'd be happy to, happy to come out for those meetings as well.
I think that's the case where we need to be. Just reminding everybody on May 14th, at Law Enforcement Center program. And then I was wondering, when I'm listening to Laura a little bit, and I'll visit with her about it, I wondered for also helping in marketing Reno County to somebody that outside that might be looking into Hutchinson, Reno County, any parts of the county, if maybe there might be, and maybe it's too much, okay? But have a community events page for where, you know, Bueller has an event this Saturday, I believe, or some, in the near future, anyway. Prairie Prairie has a deal and Haven will have a deal. Some of the other communities around may have a big event that maybe, that might be a possibility. But I'll speak with Laura and see whether it's even feasible or what you all think it is feasible or whether it's too much. But that would just be a thought. So that's all I have. And any more, Joe or Randy? All right? We'll consider the meeting.